We have one resolution coming out of Executive Session. Please go green. One resolution coming out of Executive Session. Resolution 2017, B O E 77. Be resolved that the Board hereby grants the appeal dated April 24, 2018, and matters student number 617591. And only those trustees who are present for the appeal will be... Everybody will vote? Okay. I'll take a motion.
Go on, second.
Okay. We'll do a roll call, please.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Guido?
Yes.
Dr. Jokobov?
Same.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Ms. Lau?
Yes.
Mr. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Shaughnessy? Ms. Shear?
And then bring this to portion meeting where... Public comment. All right. I know there's been a lot of controversy this week, but I want to, before we begin a public comment, just run through the rules for public comment, public meeting. The policy that governs public comment is on the podium. In addition to that, we do have another policy that governs public complaints. We've received, we've all received several letters this week. Policy number 1400, and I invite all of you to access it online. Our complete policy manual is available online. And the Board believes that complaints and grievances are best handled and resolved as close to their origin as possible. And staff should be given every opportunity to resolve problems as quickly and as efficiently as possible. The Board places trust in its employees and desires to free support staff in spite of law or warrant and criticism. At the same time, some review or investigations may be initiated by administrative personnel. Proper channel of complaints is, first, teacher, staff member, principal or supervisor, assistant superintendent, superintendent, and then the Board, as per legal contractual under policy limitations. I'm going to skip down to this. Complaints or concerns about Board of Education policies, administrative actions, or other areas of school operations should be directed to the superintendent of schools. Complaints about Board policy shall be in writing, stating specific objection to the specific policy or policies or action to the superintendent. Superintendent shall review any complaint he or she receives in writing and conduct whatever study or investigation he or she deems appropriate. Superintendent shall then submit or refer the complaint to the appropriate person or level. In some cases, particularly regarding policy matters, the superintendent will submit his or her recommendations and/or report to the Board, and the Board shall then, A, review the policy, amend or repeal the policy if appropriate, notify the complainant of the action taken; or B, in other cases, review the superintendent's recommendation or recommendations, and possibly the school attorney's recommendation or recommendations, as well as any other relevant information prior to rendering a determination about the complaint or concern. The district will respond to the determination of any written complaint received within thirty business days. And the complainant may appeal the district's determinations to New York State Education Department. And the addresses for accessing New York State Education Department are available in the policy language. So I want to stress that we do not entertain any comments in a public meeting about actions taken by our administration or any of our personnel. And I know that feelings are running very high. So if you can find comments, please to issues, not people, without specifics. And I know, this is a really very sensitive topic this week. So if you have prepared comments and you do want the Board to have them and you never see the law, they're already ready, then you leave them with the Board. But I will tell you that your comments or complaints should go directly to the superintendent, right? They shouldn't come to the Board first. Superintendent should give an opportunity to address these prior to the... Now, having said that, you have two minutes. It's not a conversation. You may be answering in the background, but if you want a response, we would be happy to make you a writing. And when you come to the microphone, please identify yourself. Our board clerk will notify you when you're approaching the two-minute mark thus. And I will stop you if you get into territory that we shouldn't be getting into, in public forum. Okay. So having said that, first person up is Carmela Genther.
I'm not going to make a specific at all, but I don't know if I'm going to cross my eyes. So just tell me if I do. Good evening. My name is Carmela Genther, and I am a taxpayer and parent to soon-to-be-three children enrolled in the Kingston City School District. I am here tonight because I have great concerns for our future, for the future of our athletics. I am requesting that the Board let me to investigate our athletic department. I am also requesting that the Board look into the evaluation process and policies. I think it is in the best interest of our student athletes, as well as coaches, that this happens sooner than later. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carol Keldor?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Carol Keldor. I am a member of the community. I'm also an educator. And I'm the mother of a child who overdosed on heroin in August of 2015. When that happened, without hesitation, our family knew that we had to be open about how Ryan died. We also knew that we had to do something that could help other people in this community who were suffering the same way that we did. Our little grassroots organization called Raising Your Awareness About Narcotics, the acronym R I A N, had its first run just two months after Ryan died. The mission of Ryan is to... Yes. The mission of Ryan is to promote substance abuse awareness, share our family's journey to dispel the myths of addiction, and eliminate the stigma that is attached to it. We also support schools and organizations that provide healthy programs for the youth of our community. And we can also point people in the right direction of where they could find resources and where they could get help. Ryan has helped several fundraisers who pay for speakers and presenters throughout Ulster County. Last year, we partnered with the Boys and Girls Club and the Kingston Parks and Rec Department. And KHS paid more than $10,000 to bring in NBA player Chris Herren for an evening community event. My brother-in-law, Ron, was instrumental in making this happen. This event drew almost 2,000 people to the Kate Walton Field House. The feedback was positive, and it was incredible. Some of Kingston's own administration were there in attendance and said that this was an incredible event and offered to us anything we could do in the future with you. Just let us know. People in this community said that hearing Chris's message changed their lives, one of which, I know, saved his life. So naturally, we were excited to contact and negotiate with the manager of the New York Mets. Oh, can I use my husband's shoe mitts?
Sure.
Okay.
It was over the paper, Tim.
Oh, sorry, sorry. So naturally, we were excited to contact and negotiate with the manager of the New York Mets and Yankees, Darryl Strawberry, to come to Kingston and do it again. This time, we would try to have a day assembly for the students at Kingston High School, perhaps an evening event, too. So Ronnie started talking about partnering with Kingston High School again. And I don't want to speak for him, and I don't know the specifics, but I know that he really wasn't given a clear answer. As time went on, and we had to either secure a date and do this or not, I reached out several times to the athletic department through emails, phone calls, and I left some voicemails, and I didn't get a response. This is why I'm here tonight. I couldn't fathom why I couldn't even get a response. You see, I know that as Board of Education members, I know that your job is often thankless. You're not paid, so you're obviously here doing what you're doing because you care about the kids in this community, and so do we. Your own school, family, community partnership policy recognizes and believes the importance of such relationships between the district and community organizations. I don't want one more family, one more kid, or anyone to suffer like we did as a family. I don't want them to isolate themselves like we did. I don't want them to feel ashamed like Ronnie did. The only way that we can begin that process is to end the stigma and to talk about it. And that is by having community events about suicide, drug addiction, whatever. These events are important, and in some cases, can be lifesaving. It is my hope that in the future, I don't know where the breakdown of communication came where I didn't get a response, is really excited about having the event at Kate Walton Field House. It's a large field house. It holds about 2,000 people. Is my time up? Is it his turn now, or did I use his, too? Oh, I did? Okay. So anyway, I'd really like to be able to partner with you guys again. I don't know what happened. I do have posters.
Don't give your plans in future, Carol. You should contact superintendent.
Okay. Okay. I have posters. Darryl Strawberry will be at the Sorgetes High School on Friday, June 8, starting at 6:30. If you'd like to take some of these posters and put them through your schools. We also have tickets. The event is free. The tickets will reserve you a seat. But we invite you to come. We feel that this is important. I don't know what happened, but I just want us to be able to work together. I really do. So thank you.
Next up, Randy Keldor.
Good evening. I'm Randy Keldor, and I'm kind of echoing what my mom and sorgetes spoke about. I grew up right here in Kingston and went through the Kingston City School District all the way to high school graduation. It was an amazing feeling knowing that my grandparents, my father, and my older brother were proud alumni of KHS. My grandmother, Flo Keldor, worked in the school district for 37 years. The students adored her, and many still remain in contact with her today. My uncle, Ron Keldor, has also been an employee for about 30 years and has been very active, both teaching and coaching. I played sports throughout school and had many coaches that I looked up to and still remain in contact with to today, nine years after graduating. Gaining these relationships with positive role models are important, and kids look forward to playing sports and having these relationships with their coaches. This helps keep our youth interested, involved, and out of trouble. With that being said, I consider myself a proud alumni of KHS with the desire to continue to give back to my community. We do so through the organization Ryan, which was formed after the tragic death of my brother. I invest my time speaking at many school districts, warning students about the dangers of addiction and where a bad choice could lead them. I volunteered spending two days at KHS, spreading the same message only four months after Ryan died. We put a lot of hard work into these positive events for our community, and which we love to do. It seems as though our current athletic department might be outside of this community, doesn't see the value in Ryan, which I consider a loss to our local community. I hope the Board and school administrators keep an open mind in the future and work together with us. Thank you.
All right. That's Ritchie. And even who signed up, is there anyone else who'd like to address the Board at this point in time? Okay. Don't worry. No takeaways. Ready? Okay. I'm going to turn the floor over to start filling out their superintendent's report.
Budget referendum and results.
Okay. All right. We'll begin with budget referendum and results. B 78, Board of Education election and budget vote results. So this would be a motion to accept? Okay. Board of Education election and budget vote results. All referendums passed. And now, where the Board of Education prepares the results, the canvas to be as follows. Jacobowitz, 1,613 votes. James Shaughnessy, 1,620 votes. Daniel Guido, 1,601 votes. So be resolved that Board of Education, City School District, Kingston, New York, declare elected for three-year terms effective July 1, 2018, to June 30, 2021, Robin Jacobowitz, James Shaughnessy, and Daniel Guido. And be further resolved, the district clerk shall report the results of said election as hereby announced and declared. Okay? And then be further resolved, immediately kind of closing the polls, the election inspectors proceeded to canvass the vote and the propositions and the upgrades of school facilities using capital reserve funds, establishing a capital reserve fund, and the conveyance of the deed stating the city of Kingston, and made the following determination. Now, proposition one, the budget. Votes in favor of proposition one, to approve a $175,032,027 budget for the 2018-19 school year. Votes in favor, 1,528. Votes against, 1,000... I'm sorry, 582. Proposition number two, upgrade of school facilities for the use of capital reserves. Votes in favor, proposition two, 1,596. Votes against, proposition two, 502. Proposition three, capital reserve fund proposition. Shall the Board of Education, Kingston School District, be authorized to establish a capital reserve fund pursuant to Section 3651 of the education law to be known as the renovation and reconstruction of district buildings and facilities reserve fund, which shall be only for the purpose of paying all or a portion of the cost of renovation, construction, reconstruction, and improvements to the district's buildings and facilities, including athletic fields and fields, including original furnishings, et cetera. Okay? Votes in favor, 1,617. Votes against, 463. And finally, proposition four, the conveyance of deed stadium to the city of Kingston. Shall the Board of Education of City School District be authorized to convey to the city of Kingston by quick plane deed the school district's one-half ownership of the deed stadium property, consisting of 12.08 acres, more or less located at 170 North Front Street and 51 to 65 Joyce Lane in the city of Kingston. Votes in favor of proposition four, 1,680. Votes against proposition two, 401. I can keep doing that, I'm sorry, 401. And be further resolved, the district clerk shall report the results of this vote. Proposition one, the budget proposition. Proposition two, upgrade of school facilities, use of capital reserve funds. Capital reserve fund proposition. And proposition four, the conveyance of deed stadium to the city of Kingston as hereby announced and declared. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions. Congratulations to the re-elected trustees. And now, I will turn the floor over to Superintendent Daniel.
Thank you, Ms. Shear. We have a few reports this morning, this afternoon, and this evening, actually. Went through the whole thing. The... But our first, we have a few of their students, so I'm going to jump out of order, so that our students can present first, and they can go home because we don't want to keep them in their life. So our first presentation is with Mr. Bosa and his group of students who went to Costa Rica this year.
Good evening, everybody. Last year at spring break, Ms. Rizzo and I resurrected something that I had done a few years ago in the past, and that was to take a group of students on a field trip to areas of the world that they may never see. Jungle expeditions, coastal areas, a place and time that is so very, very different than what we have. We did that last year to Costa Rica, and the students got to do some sea turtle conservation, saving sea turtles on the beach, patrolling at night. This year, we went back again with another group of students to Costa Rica again, and we got a chance to do some other activities. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to introduce you to... And they're going to introduce themselves. Each one of our students is going to tell you a little bit about what we did on the day that they had to share their... Share their experiences on a blog with all the rest of the world. And we have some video footage that's going to go along with this. It may or may not be chronological, but it just give you a little bit of something else to look at besides our faces. So talking to you first, where's you? This is... Introduce yourself and tell us which one.
Hi, I'm... My name's Grace Longenbeck. Our first day, this isn't it, but we just pretty much spent it traveling from New York to El Salvador to Costa Rica. And when we got there, we got to the bed and breakfast, and we just did, like, getting-to-know-you activities, like, we do not... And then we went to sleep because we were all tired.
Hi, my name is Monica Reyes. I had... Oh, I had the second day. The second day, we started off doing traveling, going to this mountain that we went to. We hiked it up. We hiked up the mountain. We saw different types of animals. And while we're going to this place, we stopped at a few stops on the way. We got bacchanas, or plantains. And we also stopped in another place to get food. On the way back, we... We... Our final destination was a coffee plantation. And that's me cutting out banana tree.
Check tape.
And we went to a coffee plantation. We learned how coffee was developed and how the bean gets transformed into the coffee. We also saw different animals, pigs, cows, antlers, anything like that. And I cut down the banana tree that day. And we had dinner with them and made espaldeas, or empanadas. And it was just a really cool experience.
Hi, my name is Joan Thomas. And on day three, we had hiked down to waterfall and looked at different wildlife, surrounding it. So I met fish, actually. And then we hiked up to another waterfall, and we took time to reflect on ourselves, thinking about the different culture there and how it was different from here. And then we went to farm, something?
If you watch that, you're going to get...
I'm Monica Reyes. Well, I'm doing day four. Day four, we left the coffee... Well, we left the plantation in the morning, and we went to the... No, we were already at the reserve. We went to the reserve gate there. We got to the reserve. We started... They told us what we were going to do the next day. We had breakfast. Some of us went to do monkeys and bats. And the others, we went on a hike to look at the birds. And then some of them were crocodiles. But yeah, yes, we did. There's more on that.
Who's got the cards?
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead, Charles. Go for it.
So at the research facility, we did a lot of different activities, as Monica was saying, with bats and monkeys and crocodiles. We got to learn how field research was done on all of these different species, both in the jungle, and how data was taken and research was done in the field there, and also at night, on the water, in the mangroves, how data is collected and how the researches work, which was really interesting. And we also got to work with other volunteers from around the world that came to volunteer at that same facility, which was very interesting and very fun.
Okay. Madison.
Do you have the... Take Madison?
So one of the things that we did with the crocodiles, and this wasn't part of the original plan, was the students went out in two groups at night, in the dark, with researchers, and they had to spot crocodiles at night. And if they did, we'd go and try to catch them. And they would catch... Yes. The researchers would catch them and bring them into the boat. And what the students did... Do you have crocodile pictures? Okay. What the students did was, was they would measure all the important parameters of the animal, its length, its girth. They were doing all the measurements and doing all the recording. Oh, yeah, this was... So this was Anthony. There's a crocodile right there, a little one right there, going out into the mangroves. And they were right out there with field researchers, actually contributing to the work that they were doing to monitor the health of that particular ecosystem because these crocodiles are an indicator species. Oh, and then we went whitewater rafting. Who's up?
Hi, I'm Hannah St. Lenzel. Our last day was whitewater rafting. It was probably... Second to all? Second to all. Second-to-last day was whitewater rafting. It was probably by far my favorite. By this point, we were all really connected as a group. None of us knew each other at the beginning, but it was like we were all very best friends by the end. Something I took out of this trip by far was that the environment is really important, and they take it so seriously in Costa Rica. And I feel like we can learn so much from them. And that's it.
We spent all of this time. Yeah.
My name is Alexa Quintero. I did the last day. And on the last day, it was a really indulgence into culture because we ended up walking around a marketplace where they sold everything from souvenirs to meats to fruit. It was an extremely indulging experience. And between walking around and just seeing how everyone else lived and walking around to see what they had to offer, it really opened the eyes to how different things are in other places and how grateful we should be here.
Good job. Nick asked me to close on Deanna Rizzo. I also teach science over at KHS. And one thing we want to... We want to leave you with, you got to hear a little bit about what the kids did on the trip, but really what they gained. It's not about what they did, but what they gained. They gained appreciation for another culture. They got firsthand field research experience. And one thing that Nick and I really hope to do, these are big dreams, okay? Nothing's in concrete. But we're hoping one day to maybe build upon that relationship that we have already started with these people in Costa Rica. And maybe, one day, we have like a sister school with them and possibly do even more research between KHS and then some of the students in Costa Rica. So thank you very much for your time. We really appreciate it.
Just one last thing. All of the videos and all of the photographs that we have are in the process of being compiled onto a shared folder, which will be accessible through OneDrive. Once that's done, I'll share it with all the Board members, as well as all the administrators, if you want to look and see a lot more. We only have about six or seven hundred of them, so it's taking a little bit of time. Don't run away.
And does anybody have any questions or comments?
I'm laughing.
Yeah, please.
Does anybody say something? Glad to enjoy the trip. You had a good learning experience. Does anyone remind... Monica? Please, next time you use a machete, you never raise a machete over your head.
Sounds scary.
Well, I just want to compliment the teachers for providing this experience for the students and compliment the students for, obviously, taking that advantage of that opportunity and really, as you said, indulging yourself in that. So I think that it's wonderful. I wish that there were many more opportunities for that. I wish it wasn't so expensive. And I also hope that there's some way of collecting the data and those skills applied to our local ecosystem because we live in a beautiful area as well.
Yeah, definitely because we were on an estuary system, not much unlike the Hudson River estuary system. So it's more exciting when you're in an exotic locale, but the two ecosystems are very similar, just they differ in biological species. So, yeah, they gained a lot of insight, knowing that we live right on the shore of a very important ecosystem. Anybody else?
I just want to know, did you entertain big crocodiles?
We did. We saw them. Catching them is a difference, so we saw them. The large one, yeah, the large one that got blocked and was probably about three feet long. And they're cute and cuddly, they're not...
They go, "This one's great." They go, this one's great. Everyone in the back of the boat, they're like, what?
So thank you very much for letting me get a chance to share this with you. And hopefully, when you see this come up again next year, everybody go, yeah!
We definitely machete.
We are going to stick with our science theme for this board meeting. And we have a presentation from one of our students, Katie Houston, who is an award-winning, a typical award-winning science student. She's going to present her science research to us. Sorry? And she went to Costa Rica.
I also went to Costa Rica. Hello again. My name's Katie Houston. I'm a senior at Kingston High School this year. Authentic Science Research is a class at the high school that I've been taking for the past three years. The program begins with a student choosing a specific research question pertaining to a specific area of scientific study. And then the student spends three years researching this field of study to answer the question. The process starts through the general area of research, narrowing down the topic, developing a specific question, designing a hypothesis around that question, and finally designing a research plan and experiment. The philosophy of authentic science research, and what makes it different than all other classes, is that it is very student-led. It's a very independent program, an independent class. The teacher acts more as a facilitator. And the independent nature, of course, promotes lots of creativity and problem-solving. It's helped me build a very strong student portfolio as I progress in my career. It's self-assessed, and we also learn how to communicate results using the scientific method, which, this here is my research project that I spent the past three years on. The effect of various nursery techniques on growth rate and mortality of aquaporoa corals in northeast Tobago. So these are the two species of corals I was studying. I traveled to the island of Tobago over the summers and under breaks to study them. These are aquaporoa cervicornis and aquaporoa palmata. They are related, but as you can see, they are significantly different species. Since 1970, coral reefs over the world have lost over eighty percent of coral cover, putting at risk the ecosystem and all of the services it provides. I was researching a specific coral restoration technique known as coral gardening, which involves harvesting healthy coral fragments from a wild reef and bringing them to a nursery setting where they can be assisted in their growth and then transplanted back into the reef in a new location. The objective of this study was to determine what type of structure and attachment technique could have the highest rate, the highest success of coral regeneration. Success was measured by examining growth rates and mortality of two native coral species to identify the best and most efficient approach to building coral nurseries in the Tobago and Trinidad area. This is the island that I traveled to. As you can see, it's right off the coast of Venezuela in South America. This is Manabour Bay, where the nursery was set up. I had to build the nursery with four structures, two trees and two frames, one for each species. The trees were built out of PVC piping with hanging coral fragments. And the frames were built out of metal rods with fragments tied directly to the metal. And these are the diagrams of the two types of structures. And here is a photo of one of the frame structures with the metal rods and the small coral fragments attached directly to them. I cut fragments of coral from colonies on a nearby reef and attached them to the structures in the nursery. And they were observed once a month over the course of thirteen months. Much of this observation was done myself, but since I can't be, of course, in Tobago, over the entire thirteen months of my classes here, I was working with a mentor and a research facility on the island, where we communicated results. It was found that mortality and the death rate of specimens was higher on the tree structures for both species, with the fragments on the frames remaining healthier. And it was also found that for both species, growth rates were higher when installed on frames than when installed in trees. Ninety percent of the aquaporoa cervicornis specimens developed at least one new branch, which is a very good sign of a healthy coral fragment. These are two histograms showing growth data for aquaporoa cervicornis on the tree and on the frame. As you can see, the average growth centimeters per month on the frame is much higher than the average growth in centimeters per month on the tree. And these are two histograms of the growth data for aquaporoa palmata, where it follows the same trends. The average growth is much higher on the frame than it is on the tree structures. So for both species of the coral, growth rates were higher, mortality was lower using the metal frames. And from this data, it would be concluded that this structure and technique would be best and most efficient to use in future nurseries. But the nursery has deemed an overall success, proven especially by the development of so many new branches of cervicornis fragment, on cervicornis fragments. Over the next few years, the coral fragments I've grown in this nursery will undergo the process of being transplanted back into the wild. They'll be used to repopulate the endangered reefs of the island of Tobago. I hope to return in the future to this island, to this nursery, and continue my research and continue to build more coral nurseries to help the environment and rehabilitate the coral populations in this area of the world. I would like to thank my parents for supporting me in this project, my teacher, Mrs. Reese, for being a wonderful advisor, my mentor, Dr. Ali Ochoa, and the board for letting me present tonight. Our science research class at the high school will be holding our own science symposium, where my classmates will present their work on June seventh at six thirty in the high school. It's open to the public, if anybody would like to come. Thank you.
Katie, I just wanna congratulate you on just the magnificence of this project, but also at a time when people doubt that science is important, it's so heartwarming to see somebody like you prove them wrong. So thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Jordan, Mrs. Blau, and then we'll take the center. Congratulations, you're amazing. It's great that you found, you had to get your results, and the way you present yourself, very confident. I'm wondering what your connection is to the island of Tobago? Did you have a prior connection, or was this, what was the hatchet that you?
Well, I come from a family of scuba divers. So I have been in the ocean and in the reef for almost as long as I can remember. We traveled as a family over the summer to Tobago for the first time a couple of years ago. And I just really fell in love with the environment there and the underwater ecosystems. And I wanted to find a project that would allow me to help that beautiful ecosystem in some way.
I just wanted to make a question. Do you know where you're going to college?
I'm going to Stony Brook University in Long Island, and I'm majoring in biology.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I just wanted to congratulate you also, and I'm proud that you're a Peking High School graduate.
Thank you. I'm proud as well.
I'll congratulate you. I wanted to know where you're going for your degree next year, and we answered that question. Good luck.
So I'll just add to the many congratulations, which is obviously very well deserved. I, so I have two questions. I'm wondering how you connected with the mentor who was also doing this work in Tobago?
Well, it was kind of a stroke of luck. At the place, the location that I was staying with my family the first time in, on the island of Tobago, right down the road in a neighboring town, there's the Environmental Research Institute of Charlottesville. So we contacted the people who worked there to ask if there was any volunteer opportunities or ways to get involved with the programs and the research. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. And then my other question is actually about the structures themselves and whether those now will be used in other areas around the world, really to help regenerate coral, which we're losing quickly.
Well, there are many facilities across the globe that are using similar nursery techniques. These specific structures in this particular nursery in Tobago are, continues to be used now. And the facility I was working with is building more, building a second nursery, also on the island, but in a different location, using these structures that I and my research found to be the most successful. So those results are being used to, those same structures being built, and then second nursery on the island.
Does that answer what Hannah was saying, that's good?
It's not connected necessarily to any other organizations across the globe. It is Trinidad and Tobago.
Will you publish this in scientific journals, or like where does this go next?
I would like to publish it in the scientific journal. I have a paper written, but I haven't submitted it to anything yet.
Sounds like there are a lot of people who are talking about it.
I just wanted to step in for a second. Hi, I'm Mrs. Reese, I'm M.J. Reese. And so I'm just really, so as you can see, it's just a wonderful program. So this is a three-year science research program. And the thing is, is that the students come in all like wide-eyed, what do they wanna do? And then they work together. So that's why it's a three-year program, to actually build it up into the level that you see that Katie has produced. So I acknowledge Katie, and I just wanna thank you guys for making this course available. It's an unknown, it's a little bit of a gem. Not a lot of people know about it. So we're working on producing, doing more knowledge publications so people know about the course.
Can you tell the board how many years it's been at the high school? This is, it's?
It's been there for quite a bit of time. As you can see, there's a lot of work. So it's, and it's very individually driven. So it takes a certain type of student to actually pursue the full three years. Very often, people are like, oh, yeah, sounds great. And then finding the mentor is actually one of the more challenging, one of the most challenging parts. Because you could spend two years trying to find a mentor. And it's hard now, as budgets are getting tighter and tighter, the mentors are less and less, have less and less free time. So, and the fields are wide-ranging. We have one student working on the recidification, or the, what happens when people get put into jail? Or there's many different things. It doesn't, it's not just going to exotic places. So it's science research. So it's a research, it's a science of research. So we try to make, it's available to all sorts of students. And I just wanted to let you guys know what some of the good things that we're doing here at SUNY High School.
How many credits do students receive for the, for your classes?
It's a slightly higher credit for college. They end up with, how many credits is?
Twelve college credits.
Twelve college credits. It's a slightly higher level as far as, it's not just a regular credit, get a little bit plus.
But twelve college credits.
Twelve college credits. So you take two credits, you get two credits for the summer, and four credits for each year. So as a sophomore, you cannot sign up till you get to a sophomore. Start as a sophomore, then you take two summer credit, you get two summer college credits at the end of the sophomore year when you sign up for a summer course. And then the next year, when you're junior and senior year, you get more credits.
So two questions. This is offered through, requires to come through SUNY, oh, sir?
Uh, SUNY, University of Albany.
And your public program is June seventh?
That's correct.
East one one four?
That's correct. And it's thirty to eight here. And all the other students?
Mr. Michael?
I had a couple of questions myself. I already answered Katie, just I wanna take your congratulations. You have many things, and good luck to you.
Thank you.
So I don't have a question. First of all, thank you, Katie. That was incredible. But I think my question's really to the board, because I think in order to really make sure that Katie gets these credits and they earned them, you need to send me down there for a week to respect the structures. And then I'll come back and do a full report, very much.
We'll have to have a board retreat.
Yeah, and there's plenty of research in this local area that we can do with.
So one of the things we do, obviously, is we give awards and honors to a lot of people that come up here. But very, it's not very frequent that we give awards and honors to the volunteers that are sitting on this table. And it's nice to have the New York State School Boards Association, who does recognize the work of school boards and the things that you all do for your community and for students every day. And we have a lot of awards for some board members that just came in from the New York State School Boards Association. And I wanna make sure to get them out to you and really let the community know that it's not just the time that you spend every, you know, second and fourth, third, on Wednesday. It's the committee work that you've done, and it's the professional development that you do to make sure that you know what you need to know, so you can effectively govern our school district. And that's really what these awards are about, is about the work that you do through New York State School Board Association, through the trainings that you go through, the conferences you attend, and the things that you participate in on a state level. So I think it's, I'm really proud, I tell you, this is my fourteenth year as a superintendent, and I think I've never given this many awards to board members for work that they've done through New York State School Board Association. So I think it's great that, how much do you put into being board members? You wanna learn, you wanna know more, and you're going out and learning. So first, I have two awards that go to Mrs. Suzanne Jordan. First is the Board Achievement Award, which is awarded for seventy-five credit hours towards work, learning towards being a board member, or professional development. And then I have the second, again, you earn two at once, which is the Board Excellence Award, is for reaching the hundred and fifty hours. So I want to. No, sorry, none of these come with any raises. Well, actually, there are some things that do, so our next recognition is for Board Mastery Award, and that is for two hundred and fifty hours of professional development. And that goes to Dr. Jacobowitz. But with that also comes one free training to the Texas School Board Association, and you get the very coveted billfold. Also, with the Board Mastery Award this time around is for Mr. Shaughnessy, for two reasons, two hundred and fifty hours. And he also gets the billfold. Another Board Mastery Award, again, I'll say that, for two hundred and fifty hours of professional development, goes to Mrs. Blau. And we got another Board Mastery, and this is for Mrs. Collins. Again, two hundred and fifty professional development hours, and the one for a full honor. And while we, there are, you know, there are several board members who have won, so they've been here through the last few, through the year. We give, just about everyone in the board has received something at one time or another. This is kind of for some reason, a lot of ones this time around. But lastly, and this is for the Board Lifetime Achievement from the New York State School Boards Association, which goes, is for our board president, Mrs. Sheer. There's a time of the year where we give a lot of awards to our students. This time of the year, we give awards to our school board members as well. Last thing on the super tension report is our Second Century Project Report with KSQ and BBL. And Tom Clapp, sorry. And Tom Clapp, sorry. I will grab, we'll do the background.
Hello, everyone. How are you tonight? So Robin and Armand and Tom, a few quick updates. From the reconstruction design end, for the main second phase, from the last time we were here, the SEP has revised some architectural comments, and Armand and Steve have responded to them. We're still in the queue for the MEP review, which is many months down the road, bigger than end of summer. And that's just projecting where the, they are currently with their review process. From that, we'll react on approvals and the generations of funds. The next, after the reconstruction that we're working on is the five-year capital plan with the successful passing of the voters' approval last night. Armand will talk a little bit about what we are doing, what we're planning on doing on the next, you know, few months, what we worked here.
The authorization that came last night represents critical capital project investments to Miller Middle School, Edson, and JFK. We actually presented some preliminary scoping to the facility committee last month. All three schools will have window replacements addressed, curb and pavement improvements. The heater at the middle school is currently under concept planning. And then an elevator addition at JFK matches our mission to make sure that all schools are accessible. We did a lot of homework during the five-year capital plan phase, so we're really hitting the ground running. We expect to send projects up to the State Education Department with your blessing in the fore. And we aim to be prepared to break ground, construction on these projects in the summer of nineteen. Thank you.
Robin will talk about what we're currently doing and finishing up.
Good evening. Just to give you a quick progress update. Basically, we're in finishes in the Salzman Building in both the first and second floor, putting on the curtain wall, glazing, finishing up the lobby. Probably the biggest change that everyone will see onsite over the course of the next four to five weeks is all the sidewalks curving, paving, parking lot, and all of that is set to be complete with paving starting either twenty-eight through the first week in June to get that finished up. We expect to be in punch list phase by about graduation day. And that'll take a couple of weeks for the contractors to come back and take care of that. Furniture delivery on July ninth. So everything is moving along very well at this point. You can see that they're putting the metal panels on. It's a secret, the color's behind it and everything until they take off the, the screen that they have on there to protect it. And you can see the development, curtain walls, storefront, double entries. All of these are going in with the glazing, et cetera. Lot of site work. So again, parking lot is ready. It looks worse today than it did a week ago. Because they're actually putting down the subways for the road for Peter Street that goes up and over, in front and the plaza. All the concrete work will start Wednesday. Again, you can see the storefront and the entryway into the secure, security area. This is the intercom system. This wire here is for the card reader. You probably can't see it from there, but there's a card reader system, as well as an intercom system on this door. Light poles, light fixtures, all of that are going into place. Parking lot is graded. We're going to be restoring the site where the construction is. Had an impact both in the staging area and alongside of Salzman by the east addition, and by the west addition for that matter. This is a little, is, look at the library and where we're at right now. We'll have a distribution desk that's being finalized. Carpets already in place, ceilings are in place. Alls we have to do is vacuum and move some furniture, and we'll be, we'll be good to go. Again, case work, all of the offices, carpet, everything in, in these areas are complete. This is the school store, which is basically ready for opening. They won't open this year, but it's, it's ready for opening. And starting on Monday, the second floor corridors will be open for use by students. We're just going to lock out the lockers and the classrooms in that area, but the corridor will be open so that kids can go through that area, because we've had it closed off for a while. It's looking nice. Again, you can see, everything is being polished up and final cleaned. The windows are being cleaned. And we're looking for mid-June to late-June for completion. And you all are invited on the tour-
On June thirteenth.
On June thirteenth.
Three thirty, me and Lainey.
Yeah. Questions?
Questions? Mrs. Lott? I have a question. You said a card reader. Are we going to have a card reader?
Only at the entrance door, so the main entrance-
The new security office entrance?
Right.
Well, both. You'll have, you'll have one for teacher use, right at the regular entrance. And then as soon as arrivals are done, and that door is basically taken offline, the teachers can come in this one. But on the security side, there's a triple card reader. So you'd have to have the card reader to get into the vestibule. And there's an intercom to let them in there. Then there's a card reader to get from the immediate waiting area into the security desk office in the front where you can meet someone there. And then there's a third card reader to actually get out into the classroom or into the school proper. So it's a, it's a double secured system to get from the outside.
Students won't have cards?
No, well, after the initial, other thought was, is that everybody's in the building that should be in the building. So if a student's late, you have to come in through the security office. And so they'll come through. So somebody will be there to buzz them in. Okay, their card will work, but they'll get buzzed in. If you're, if you're from the public, you won't have a card.
You're talking about the ID?
The ID bid will have, have a strip on it. I believe it's a strip or a check. And we already have that equipment, and Gary could talk better to what the, the system is. But, but they, they'll be able to come in that way. And then if there's a, a member of the community that needs to get in, they're buzzed into that space. And then, and then whoever they're there to see will either come meet them or they'll be escorted to wherever they're going.
So this, so just to clarify, the students will be able to swipe their way in, but there'll still be a security guard there to clarify, check, and check them in later? Or clarify that they're actually-
Right. It's pretty much what the, and I'm, and I don't know the whole setup. Yeah, Sean obviously is working on this. And, but, but basically, it's what's happening at the front door now. There's a person sitting there, the student comes in late, they sign them in, and then they give them a pass to go to wherever they're going. And that's all going to happen through this door.
And during the day, the front doors are now locked?
Right.
And the security guard's stationed outside?
Right.
And lets each individual person in to check in and sign in the next stop?
Correct.
So are we going to be using the front entrance or?
Oh, the, the Broadway side? No, that's a ceremonial entrance. I think we'll be using it for maybe plays and things like that. But, but not for concerts and those types of things, but not the daily use. Unless I, and again, bus patterns change. I, maybe some students will come in that way if Kirk thinks it's the, the right thing.
I don't know. I think the point is to cut down the traffic on Broadway.
Oh, I totally agree. It, it's designed for buses to come up the back and for student drop-off to be up the back and, and everybody come through these doors. That's, that's what it's been designed for.
Any other questions or problems? Mr. Shaw?
I have two paving questions. One is the faculty parking lot on the west side of the Kingston campus, SUNY Austin. Needs to be paved. And also, the GW playground has a lot of potholes in it?
Well, the, the parking lot at Sophie Finn, the old Sophie Finn, is scheduled to be repaired in phase two. And as far as George Washington, we've gone around and we've used a little over a hundred and fifty bags of blacktop to fix all the potholes that we can. And then we have a little bit of blacktop money left, and this year, we're spending it at Chambers School. We are trying to get to George Washington, and quite frankly, I could probably blow my entire budget on blacktop. It's definitely, there's no doubt. And it's very expensive right now. So it's, we're, we're trying to get the worst of it, and we have, and we've, we've done repairs at, at GW. But I, I don't see a wholesale redoing of that parking lot unless it's in there.
Any other questions?
I just have one question, and thank you, Robin. I want to go over every day, because something, you know, something new is happening. It's very exciting, but I, but I always have one nagging type of question. So you're saying we're starting the paving on Wednesday?
Concrete on Wednesday.
Concrete on Wednesday. So what is the impact on our neighbors?
It shouldn't be any impact on, on your neighbors. The, the, on Wednesday, they're going to come in, they've already brought in all the subways. They're going to start with the concrete sidewalks that go from what is the break room on the first floor out into that, the first courtyard. You know how that one may have two courtyards? We have the one between east and west. They're going to start on the west, do all those sidewalks, on the east, do all those sidewalks. Then they're going to do the sidewalk and plaza out, and then put the curb in. The paving itself will be a four to five-day paving duration. And we've already, we met with Kirk today, and we discussed lessons in getting people moved around. But if we have nice, cool weather, it'll only keep everyone off it for the day. Of course, if it turns ninety degrees out, then it's going to be a couple of days that we don't want anybody to be driving on it. But we're working with, with admin, but it shouldn't affect anyone adversely.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Got to do the superintendent's report.
Okay. Which brings us to the consent agenda. Are there any resolutions that any trustee would like pulled from the consent agenda? Okay. Now entertain a motion. Any discussion? Okay, well, does the figure accept the consent agenda? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extensions. And that brings us to donations. So you don't have any donations for it?
We have D-51, where as a Kingston City School District is the recipient of a generous donation from the EC Meyer PTA in the amount of two hundred and eight dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're, we reached a person agenda for education. And we have a policy committee report. I don't know if it's not yours. But we'll do it in the order that it's on there. Copying conversation. There was a copying conversation held recently. Yeah, I just got there, so.
Quick, quick.
Yeah. Wait, oh, I was there. That point of phrase.
Hello.
Yes. That point of phrase on May seventh. So. I was there too, but you can- Okay. Well, that's our agenda for the report.
Well, I think we only had about seven people that were there, which is a small crowd and what we want and others. But I think that the people were well-informed, Mr. Wallace blowing on within the district, and I think they appreciated that. They had a few questions and comments. One person did bring up an issue that was at one of the schools, and that was taken here the very next day. So I thought it was very effective, and it helps us for people in North Dakota.
And then, and I know Mrs. Lott was there, Stephanie was there, I was there, who was there?
Yes, that was work.
I think that was that, yeah. Okay. All righty. Then it brings us to Policy Committee, and Mrs. Collins, who's in for review.
All right. Policy Committee met last on Friday, May eleventh. We were pretty busy. We have three policies on tonight's agenda up for first readings. The first one is Policy 5225, which is student personal expression. We currently have a policy on the books, which is 5220, dealing with school-sponsored publications. So these are really meant to work in tandem in light of current events, student, increased student activism, et cetera. The New York State School Boards Association is recommending this new policy, student personal expression. So that is on the agenda for our first reading this evening. The next policy that we are putting forth is Policy 5550, student privacy. Last time that we had revised this policy was back in two thousand and eight. So it's definitely time to revise it. Once again, on here with the school board's recommendations. That's a two-page policy. And then finally, we have construction safety, which is very timely. Policy 7365. Mr. Clapper had joined us at the meeting, so it was vetted by him. He gave us some feedback specifically about the, the dollar amounts that are in here. Last time this policy was revised was ten years ago, also two thousand and eight. You can imagine, construction has changed significantly. So it deals with when we have to hire licensed architects, et cetera, how we have to provide notification and provide a safe school environment during construction projects. So those, they are all in here for first readings. They will have two readings. Important to be moving them forward in this climate. And our next policy meeting is scheduled for Friday, June first.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Collins? Thank you very much. Which brings us to Old Business. Is there any Old Business and any trustee that might raise at this point in time? Yes.
That's our, our box meeting, and we passed the calendar for next year. And I'm getting a few questions about, oh, there's a little bit different, and the regulations are on there, and really late. So I was just wondering if you could speak to that at the half-days, and I know I'm impacted this year, but why?
Well, the, that's, most people know that there was new regulations around the calendar. Went from the hundred and eighty days of attendance, that was just basically measured by a few hours of, of being in the building, now to, now we're a place where they are actually counting the number of minutes of instruction during each day, and setting minimums for us per week, and the minimum number of hours, nine hundred and ninety hours per year of students in classrooms at the high school, at the secondary level, and nine hundred minutes of instruction during, during, in elementary now, nine hundred dollars, I'm sorry, at elementary. So we have to make sure we meet all of those requirements. It does take away some of the old issues that we had with not being able to have a half-day, have a half-day on a shortened week and those kinds of things, but you have to make those minutes up. At the secondary level, it's particularly difficult because we've been told that passing time does not count. Lunch does not count. Home room does not count. It's really, the minutes that they're counting are the time that there is a certified teacher standing in front of students delivering instructions. At the elementary school, recess doesn't count. You know, the, the lunch doesn't count, those kinds of things. So it's getting to those minutes, we need to make sure we had as many days as, as we can have. So we do have, you know, built into the calendar, you know, it's more instructional days than, than most districts, with a hundred and eighty-two and a hundred and eighty-four for our teachers. But there's, so we had to kind of maneuver around some of those old things that we did, like running several half-days at the end of the school year, but it takes away those minutes that we can't, we can't do that. Even prior to that, those half-days at the school were, were challenging because of the requirements around full days of school during a, a abbreviated week. Calendar goes long this year, and that's just based around the exams, the region's exam schedule. You know, it's when Labor Day falls and when the region's exam calendar comes out, so we're running late. But this year, you know, on the other side, we're early this year, with graduation being, you know, so early. So that's the, it's the calendar.
I'm not sure I agree with elementary schools that recess shouldn't, shouldn't count as instruction, in my mind. And I think that's going to lead to reduced recess. And I don't know that that's a-
There was a-
And I think that, you know, you have to follow the Board of Regents' regulations. But I think the school board also has a responsibility for letting the Board of Regents know if we disagree with something that they, that they're putting forth as a requirement.
Well, there, there was a thirty-day period, you know, comment period during that time. At which time, I think Dr. Corey had solicited comments from the superintendents in the, in, in Olklahoma County. I know that there was, in reading that, and it's still available on the, on the state website, there were no questions and answers or there were comments. There were several people who brought that up. That came up, of recess not counting. The answer was exactly the answer I thought we were going to get, and they said that, well, that's a minimum. You know, the nine hundred minutes- You know, the 900 minutes of instruction is a minimum. It doesn't mean you can't have more time and add the recess. And what they're saying is instructional time has to be 900 minutes. But, you know, as you all know, the more minutes, the more things we have to put into those minutes, the more teachers we need to have, those kind of things, with high school more classes, which then has a budgetary impact. So when you look at, you know, we had to try to just be creative. We have not reduced recess at the elementary schools to facilitate this, this new regulation. Everything, you know, our recess, our lunch periods remain longer at the middle and the high, longer than almost every lunch period in high schools that, you know, anywhere with 40 minutes at middle school and high school. So giving the students ample opportunity to eat and get outside for a little while. So those times have not been reduced. We've been creative in this schedule to make it work with the regulations, meet the required hours, and still keep those things in place.
But in the past, we had 180 days, but there were specifications for the number of hours that each day had to be, which also didn't include lunch and recess. That's not so new.
It's not really new.
So it was, what, 5.5 hours for high school and 5 hours for elementary school that didn't include recess? And so our days were just a little, as you know, a little bit longer, 6.2 or whatever. So that's, right. And so that's why we're able to keep it. So that's always been a rule. And I, but I would agree that we should be careful not to ever reduce the.
And how does Regents' Week count as instructional time?
They, we receive, actually during Regents' Exams in January and Regents' Exams in June at the high school level, we receive the maximum number of minutes that we have in a regular school day during the school year for that time. So it counts as a full. It's a full, it counts as a full day of school for the high school students. Correct. But manage, you know, there's no way, given the Regents' Exam structure, in June especially, could we have 2,000 students in the building while administering, you know, the Global Studies exam and another exam at the same time? It just, we couldn't, we're not staffed for that with supervision and modifications for our students with disabilities and those kinds of things.
Any other trustee of any old business stories? All right, I have an item. Did you ask that everyone submit the superintendent's evaluation, recognition, via online, in the electronic version or paper format to Mr. Burna by today? They're not all in, you know who you are. So please get them in from the next paper out, because it's going to carry her. She's got to compile everything and type it up for us. And we have a special board retreat, superintendent's evaluation on May 23. It's every question only. And it's important that we have that ready for them. Okay? So do you think, get that in. New business? Any new business that any trustee would like to raise? Mr. Shaw?
Are there any plans for reviewing elementary school attendance zones?
That, look. We actually, as far as plans for, I would say no, because we do it, we do it regularly. I mean, it's a regular conversation, especially as we look at, when we look at our enrollments every year, when we look at making sure, we look at our special permissions every year, when we look at our students with disability classes that move around the district every year, and when we look at where we see bubbles and dips every year as well. So I mean, there's a frequent conversation. Actually, if you go in my office, on my, on my desk right now is a map of our, on my conference table is a map of our attendance lines. Camille can tell you of that line. So we are constantly looking at that, I mean, a little more closely right now, because we do have some interesting population patterns with the, and with thoughts around our pre-K program at Maher and the idea of bringing a bilingual program in there and how can we grow that through our schools? Where would we, where would we magnetize it? Could we do it in every school? How many sections would it require? Those kind of things are conversations that we're having, and those are big conversations. And many of the things that we're trying to do, that we're looking at, they all, they all kind of fit together, and they'll require each of those things to happen in order for us to be able to do, do them effectively. So yes, the question, if you're asking, the question is yes. Do we have something, do I have something to come forward with words like, you know, in 2019, this is what we want to do? No, not yet.
Any other questions? Any other new business? Mrs. Jordan?
Just because you gave me an idea, what you said, in light of the fact that we're planning in two years to open up a preschool center and hopefully have most of our students involved in some pre-K experience, I wonder if we ever thought about again what the age of the kindergarten should be September 1st? And whether or not that's something that we should look into in terms of, you know, success? It's very different when you're four and a half or four and three quarters of a month. And there is a huge difference between a child who is five September 1st and another child who's not five until they're, until December 1st. And I just wonder, since we'll have programming that will kind of wrap more children, and it hopefully won't be seen so much as a child care issue. I just think it would be important to examine whether or not it would be a good time to work toward appropriate developmental kind of standard.
We have not been looking at that. I mean, we, I know, we've had this discussion before, and I know that Mr. Purge and Mrs. Gibbons, a few years back, actually did a little work around. So, but we could revisit that.
It just might be the right time, you know, because you're going to have programming
Any other new business? Board member announcements, any announcements, any trustee would like to make?
Just balance. We've commented, somebody had said this to me this morning, and I think it's worth commenting on. Yesterday, we had that threat of horrific weather, and some of our neighboring districts were hit really hard. And as much of an inconvenience as it might have been, just want to say, I think it was the right call and behalf of our administration to do the shelter in place. I'm really thankful to our teachers and staff and drivers for keeping everybody safe and sound. It could have been a little bit chaotic, but I'm just thankful that we made that call and for everyone's efforts.
And I just want to comment, thank you, Mrs. Collins, because I think I got, I didn't get a lot of thank yous about that. From a lot of parents, but I really do want to appeal to our, to the parents in our community about that. If, if a decision is made that we need to hold our buses and we need to hold our students in our school buildings, that decision is made for a real, I mean, I don't do that without thinking about the fact that we have 6,000 students getting on buses that travel, you know, 135 different buses, different bus routes all over this city that the, the, I'm not going to say chaos, because I would never say anything here is chaos. But, but the confusion and the disruption that that brings. So I would never do it if I thought that there, this was, you know, it's not for light and transient reasons, that, you know, we had, we were told, you know, get to shelter right when we were about to start dismissing students. So our job at that point is to get our students to shelter. Actually, our principals went out and parents were waiting, they asked parents to come into the building for shelter. And for a parent to tell their student, no, don't do what that building principal tells you, do what I tell you to do, is a problem for us. In emergency situations, we are to act as reasonable and prudent parents, and the safest place in this community in those situations are probably our school buildings. So I just ask, we don't randomly call those kinds of events. We don't randomly call shelter, a shelter in place, you know, for nothing. We called that because we thought there was an imminent warning, and as you can see, in several of our surrounding communities, there were, you know, serious issues. So I, again, I appealed to our parents, we have safety protocols in place for a reason. We do these drills for a reason, and they're not to, to keep your students away from you or to do something because, just for the, just to do it. It's because we're worried about the safety of our students. You know, we invited our bus drivers into the buildings, parents were waiting in the parking lots into the buildings, because that was the safest place. So again, you know, we drill, we have these drills, we have these procedures, we spend a lot of time and effort developing these procedures and making sure that our kids are safe. And if we, if we put into students' minds the idea that you don't have to listen to the adults in the building during an emergency, that is a scary situation for us, because it could be something other than a tornado warning. It could be an active shooter. And if at that point, a student has in their mind that I don't have to follow this plan because my mother or father says I do what they said, and now with the building principal says, we have a tragedy, and I, and we cannot have that. So I, so I ask, please, that parents, when you speak to your students about these things, you follow the building level, you know, of the principals and teachers' advice and their direction, whether it's what we're supposed to do. The plan is in place for our kids, not, not for any other reason.
Any other board member announcements? I have, actually, and somebody else jumped in at the. On Monday evening, there was a TMI assembly at the high school in the evening, and this black voice is mad, and a group of students had been working since, well, all year in the week with the director of, and the assistant director of the TMI project. And they performed their pieces to a very enthusiastic audience. It was, it was, you jump in if you want to say anything else. And the second day was the Mendelson concert. The high school choir, select members of the high school choir performed with the Mendelson group last Saturday evening, and it was very well received, and it was beautiful. So, you know, Mr. Shaw, he also performed. And that's all. Any other announcements? Okay. It brings us back to second opportunity for public participation. Same rules as before. I'm not entering any comments, criticisms, or personal actions, et cetera. Any comments? Now, Mr. Burna.
I'm Herb Lamb, and I just want to let you know, on May 5, I had the opportunity to attend and chaperone the high school choir to New York City to the Heritage Music Festivals. And I can't tell you how proud I am of that group and of Larry Roman for the job that he does for our students in this district. The pieces of music they perform are some of the most difficult things I've ever performed in my life. And there's no other choir like them in New York State. I don't care what anyone says, and you should be very proud of what they do. Tomorrow night at Point de Praise, if you can still get a ticket, they will be doing those three for a professional recording, plus they'll be doing Elijah with an orchestra made up of our best string students and instrumentalists. So please come see it, because you will be very impressed.
Anyone else would like to press the board at this point? Okay, since we have.
Just on that, don't go if you don't have a ticket or a check in.
Yeah, you won't get in. You won't get in. Even if you volunteer to stand in the back, because everybody would volunteer to stand. Okay, so I'll now entertain a motion, since we've no, to adjourn, since we have no need to speculate over the session. Some, all those in favor?
Aye.